Roll call, it looks like all commissioners are present. Next item on the agenda is the order of business. Is there any additions or changes to the order of business, Mr. Hadley?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just add item two under discussion. We'll just be introducing Diamond Acres Vacation that's going to be coming to you in October.
Okay. Put that under the work session?
Yes, please. That's item two.
That'll make a motion to approve the order of business as presented?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion on the order of business? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright. Next item would be the meeting minutes for the August 21st meeting. Any corrections or changes to the meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes stated August 21st, 2019, as written.
We have a motion. Do we have a second to that?
So moved.
And we have a second. Any further discussion regarding the minutes for the August 21st meeting? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move into our agenda, action items. Item one is a Renaissance Zone request for a Renaissance Zone project located at 431 Villard Street West. Planner Josephson will have the details on that for us.
Yes, good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Steve Josephson. This is a request by Charbonneau Car Center for a five-year request for a Renaissance Zone project. They're taking an existing building on West Villard. They're going to put their Quick Lube and auto service, they're moving it over there. They're also going to expand the building. They are asking for a five-year program. They meet the minimum criteria, they exceed the minimum criteria for the Renaissance Zone project as set out in both the state requirements and in our Renaissance Zone plan. And I believe there's a representative here to present their application.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chairman.
Good morning.
Yes, as Mr. Josephson has stated, we'd like to, well, we submitted our application hoping for approval. We're just finding a little more congestion in that area as we're growing, and this property became available, so we thought, and it was close, we thought it'd maybe be a good idea to take some of our more congested day-to-day business, which is our Quick Lube. That's kind of the in-and-out traffic. More so this time of year with schools starting, it gets to be really congested in there. So we thought, well, this is a nice building, it's close, it's on Villard. It'd be a great opportunity for us to expand our business and help our customers kind of for ease for parking and in-and-out, quick access. There's some neighboring retail business, while they're waiting for their oil change, they can go get a sandwich, do some shopping, whatever. So it just kind of was a good fit for us. So we thought we'd submit our application, and again, as Mr. Josephson has stated, as far as the minimum criteria, we had gone over that, and hoping for your approval. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Mr. DeWorack? Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Alright. Commissioners, any questions or concerns regarding the application or any discussion from Mr. Josephson? Hearing none? I'd look for a motion.
This is, I'm sorry, President Friedrich, this is a public hearing.
Right. Let's start with that first. Then I guess, hearing no, discussion will open the public hearing regarding the Charbonneau Car Center Renaissance Zone project application. Anyone in the public that would like to step forward and make any comments or have any concerns regarding this application, please step forward now. Seeing nobody in the public stepping forward, we'll close the public hearing and turn it back to you Commissioners. What are your wishes?
I'll make a motion. The City of Dickinson Planning and Zoning recommends approval of the Charbonneau Care Center addition for Renaissance Zone for tax exempt as being compliant with the City of Dickinson's Renaissance Zone plan as amended effective July 1st, 2019, and with the City of Comprehensive Plan as well as being in the interest, the best, the interest of the public health and safety and welfare.
I second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The application is approved. Thank you. Alright. Item two on our action items for today is final plat. This item is to consider and continue a tabled public hearing on a preliminary final plat for Westridge, excuse me, Westridge Third, which is a replat of Westford Second, considered and tabled on August 21st, 2019, Planning Commission. Mr. Hadley, you want to introduce us a little bit?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, as you know, we heard this last month, we talked about, it has some challenges from a design standpoint, engineering from sewer and design. We've discussed it with the applicant over the last month, and we don't have any final engineering sewer plans that show what exactly we're doing, but I think we have a, we're close enough that we could probably, staff could recommend that this be approved with a limitation of 63 units on this particular plat, and then also that final engineering plans are approved prior to a time that it goes to the City Commission for final plat approval and the resolution. So, Mr. Kubis is here, our contract engineer is here, and actually, the applicant is here, the applicant's representative. I think maybe turning it over to them to talk about the engineering issues probably would be prudent, just because I think that's why we're still back here.
Is there somebody that's representing the applicant that would like to step forward and make any comments?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, I'm Jeremy Esom with Roar's Development. I don't know if I need to make any comments at this point, if you, but I sure could answer any questions that we'd have or go through it a little further. Now, one of the things we brought up is the sewer. We did get that report last night, and I did forward it to Mr. Kubis and engineering staff, and I did actually just provide it to Scott as well. It was later coming in. I believe it answers any of the questions that we have, but it'll take some time to review. As far as the limiting the number of units, I don't believe we have a problem with that. It's just a matter of how it's done, I think. At one point, it was talk that we maybe rezoned from R2 to R1 to do it. That has many challenges from your standpoint, is that the whole plat is set up around R2. And so I don't know that that's an option, but possibly within the DA, limiting is a good option, so we can sure, discuss that further.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Esom. Any questions for Mr. Esom? Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Buller.
I'm trying from memory, but all of our conditions are now satisfied, essentially satisfied?
Yeah, from last month, except for this particular. And then, how it would be wrapped up, just to answer the question there, there would be a development agreement for this plat that would come forward and go to the City Commission as well, that would wrap in the conditions from planning, and then any conditions from the engineering side, from plan review, and the limitation of units would then be placed in the development agreement. So it'd be very clear to not only the applicant, but us, as to where they're going.
Mr. Kubis, do you have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, just to step back to the last meeting, so the three main items that engineering had concern with were the cul-de-sac, access to Westridge, and the sewer issue that Mr. Hadley's referenced. As you see, the plat did change, where there's now access to Westridge with, I think it's 47th Avenue West. The cul-de-sac, we met with the Roar's group, determined that that was, you know, I guess from some of the city's standpoint, a necessary evil. We don't like to promote cul-de-sacs, but in cases like this, I think it's an acceptable cul-de-sac. And then the sewer issue, there were certain ways to approach it, and I think what we were looking for was a rezone to R1, where the flows from an R1 development would be, you know, at the highest amount they could be, they would be less than the highest commercial flows or R2 flows. And what Mr. Esom is referencing is the size of the lots work for single-family homes when zoned R2. If zoned R1, the lots would be a little bit small, so it wouldn't, they would need to replat the entire Westridge Third here as it sits before you today. So I think our next best option, like Mr. Hadley referenced again, was to limit the amount of units in a development agreement and retain the zoning as R2. So with that, yeah, I think, you know, we need to go through this sewer report that Mr. Esom has submitted, but with the understanding that the units would be capped, so to speak, in this Westridge Third. I think we can work through all the engineering issues that we had discussed at the last meeting.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Mr. Hadley, do we need to reopen the public hearing on this? It was tabled?
You can open it again, I believe. I think we had the public hearing, no one was here. I guess I'll defer to Attorney Kreip. I don't know that we have to, but if you want to, I think we can.
I would agree with that. If you had, if you did the public hearing and it was published and everything for the last meeting in August, then you wouldn't need to.
Okay. Well, then, if we don't need to go that far, is there any other questions or concerns or comments?
Mr. Hadley, somebody referenced 47th Street, did I hear that? I'm just trying to locate that on the map.
Avenue is right here.
47th Avenue, okay. Oh, there.
Did you see her?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Buller.
Are you ready for motion?
Sure.
Based on the additional work we put into this, the plat and recommendation by Mr. Hadley, Mr. Kubis, I would make a motion that we approve as presented with the contingencies as laid out, and all the contingencies from the August 21st meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second, but, Mr. DuKart, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor approving the final plat, FLP-005-19, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright. Takes care of all of our action items for today. Move down to item four, work session items, and first item on that is the Shinago Drive S U P discussion. Are you leading the charge on that, Mr. Hadley?
I will start it off.
Okay.
Chairman, thank you. Yes, as you're probably aware, we have a sober house that opened up in Dickinson on Shinago Drive. The last City Commission meeting, there was a number of residents that came there to express their concerns. I had met with the owner and the owner's legal representation at that time, about a month before that, had contacted and written a letter to them a month before that, and instructed them that they needed to get a special use permit. So where we are at this point is, they have written a couple of letters to us stating how they believe that it maybe doesn't apply to them. Attorney Kreip, the first letter out of the sheet coming back to the city, I believe, was back to the owner stating that they did need to, and they have issued a response. So, you know, that's where we are to date. I think with that, if there's further questions on where we are, I think Administrator Gah and Attorney Kreip would be the ones to answer the questions. You heard some of the city commissioners anyway, that are on the Planning Commission, heard the concerns from the neighbors. Most of it, I feel, did probably 150 calls on this particular item from people that were just concerned about not knowing that it was going into their neighborhood and that it was there. So with that, hopefully that does a good enough job of.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Ms. Kreip or Mr. Gah, any additional comments?
I'll just chime in a little bit, because this is one of those difficult balancing acts, where you have an entity that really is trying to provide a good service in our community. There's no doubt that those types of services are needed. We're just concerned the matter it was done and the concern it has made the neighbors. Mr. Hadley was correct. We can't go a day without getting an email or a phone call about this, so we're really trying to balance those. And that was what we were really hoping for in the next Planning and Zoning Commission, was that the sober living folks would come and kind of present their plan. I think that was the problem, is there was no plan presented, and so everybody's kind of surprised by this. We're trying to figure out, is it a treatment facility? Is it a group home? What is it? Where does it fit in our codes? And I think most of you were probably copied on our response yesterday. We laid out a plan to keep the facility open if they met certain criteria during the interim, and then also what would happen after the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I don't have the most confidence right now, quite frankly, that this is going to move forward in a very positive way, because the letter yesterday was, I would say, pretty scathing, as far as, I don't like what you're telling me and I don't want to do it. And so, again, that really swings, it makes it difficult to balance with the neighbors. Some of them, which are here today, very, very excited to hear what updates we have, and we're going to continue moving this along. It's our intention that there will be a public hearing on this at the October meeting, and what the actual request is at that time is, in my mind, somewhat foggy at this moment.
Ms. Kreip?
I would agree with what's been said to this point. The letter that we got yesterday said they have ceased intake of new residents, and they're going to seek to, Hope's Landing is going to seek to terminate their lease agreement with the property owner, but they're going to have or encourage the current residents to lease that house on their own. And so that creates another set of issues with the number of non-related parties that can be living in a home together. So it doesn't necessarily, I think, assuage the concerns of the residents, because then you have a completely unsupervised operation as to, when they had the sober living house, I think there were, you know, a set of rules they had to live by and things like that. So I think there definitely needs to be more communication with Hope's Landing and just kind of working through the process. I was contacted by one of the board members who indicated that they felt they just couldn't comply with the requirements to bring forth the planning and zoning for the October meeting, all of the things that were necessary to be reviewed at the site plan committee. I think from a legal perspective, my concern is, if you have up to 10 people or up to eight people living in this house, are there fire code issues or building code issues? And that's really where we need to be conscious of that, and then going through the uses and making sure that it fits within the code. They had mentioned some protections under the Fair Housing Act, and to an extent, that is correct, there are Fair Housing Act implications in this, but the Fair Housing Act doesn't exempt the property from being code compliant. There might be reasonable accommodations that have to be made, but in order to do that reasonable accommodation process, they have to come to the table and have those discussions. And to date, it doesn't seem like we've had a good conversation, so I'd invited the board member and anyone from Hope's Landing to come to the meeting today, hopefully in the work session, just have some discussions, and kind of start the conversation at the very least. And I don't know if they make it for short notice or what, but I still intend on, and Mr. Gah and I discussed, reaching out to continue the conversations and wrap this up hopefully in a more conducive way to city purpose and give the neighbors some confidence on what's happening going forward.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple things to add to that, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Just to clarify that, you know, I mean, it comes down to the fair housing issue, that this use, however we distinguish it, is, requires a special use permit in that zone, but that's not really exclusionary. It's an allowed use with public review, is basically how that's drafted. So I think that's how we get across the fact that we're not picking on or excluding that facet of folks. And then, just to clarify Mr. Gah's comment on the public hearing in October, today at noon is my deadline. I'm doing item two on our discussion item, is a notice that I'm putting out today by noon for our October meeting. So we would have to notice that today if we're going to hear that at our October meeting. So if that doesn't happen, just so the board knows, it would be a November item.
I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think we need to have a public hearing. I mean, we should notice it, I think, for next meeting.
Based on the correspondence I have, that would be my recommendation, is to put it on the agenda regardless. If we have future communications with them and they just absolutely do not want to be part of the process, we can always take it off the agenda, but I think it makes more sense, I think it's a good faith effort on the city's part to put it on and have those conversations. So, and then, just to kind of expand on Mr. Hadley's comments on that Fair Housing Act, it applies to cities in how we apply zoning rules. So the St. Bernard Parish in Louisiana is probably the most recent case example of a city that violated the Fair Housing Act in that they banned a certain style of group home from all single-family residents, like all R1 zones completely, and there was no process at all. And that wasn't based on any, you know, specific public good, they just banned it and said it can only be R2 or above. And that's not what the city has done, but the purpose of the special use permit, as you all know, is to make sure that the house is safe to have that many people in and that the structure is meeting those code requirements, or that we can have that conversation about, well, you might not need this specific code requirement, but, you know, we can alter it to this, accomplish the same purpose of safety of the residents, safety of the neighborhood, and help you move forward. But like I said, they have to come to the table and be part of that process, but the special use permit in and of itself does not violate the Fair Housing Act.
My opinion is, we need to notice it for the next meeting. I don't want to kick the can down this road any far that these residents want some response from us, so... If they come to the table, wonderful. If they don't, I guess we have our answers. Do we know for sure that they have ceased operations as their letter states?
I don't have any verification of that, sir, no. And just to clarify, when I put the notice in, I find we can do it, but I'm going to base it on the information that they've given us, since I don't have any plans or site plans or anything else. So whatever they've given us as far as occupancy of 10, I believe, is what they had initially. You know, I don't typically notice things that don't have a site plan or floor plan or anything that really shows what we're doing there. But I'll paraphrase what they actually have given us as their operation, and then notice that. Just so everybody's aware.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification. When you say cease operations, do you mean not accepting new residents, or are they still allowed for unrelated parties?
Well, from what the letter states, they will discontinue the rental agreement, so that would, to me, would mean they don't have a place for their business to operate. That would be my understanding. And then, it says the men at the sober living home will be encouraged to rent the present home or another home. So it sounds like to me that that is not an operation of any longer, the letter that I, how I read it.
Mr. Chairman, I had refused to make any comments, so I can't tell you anything I know at all, and I'm not going to, since I sold the home in good faith, knowing it was federally mandated. That's it.
My understanding, this thing's really loud. If there's only four people residing there, we're pretty much, our hands are tied, I mean, there's not much we can do. Correct?
Correct. That would fit in the definition of R1, where it's four, up to four unrelated parties, and however they split the rent is up to them, so...
Even if it's owned by an organization?
My understanding is that there's an LLC that owns the property that's separate from Hope's Landing, and so it would be just like any other property management company, that they can rent that house to a single family or foreign-related individuals, however, the city doesn't mandate that each person be on the lease, that's typically a lease term between parties. So from the city's perspective, as long as code requirements are met, intended use, and there's no laws being violated, however they work out, the particulars would be a civil matter.
Thank you.
And that would be assuming it's not deemed a treatment facility?
Correct.
Or designation of a sober living facility.
It would be just four guys.
It would just be four.
Four male men renting a house. Then we have nothing else we can really do about it. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, anything else from anybody? If not, we'll... Want comments? He was here. We'll get that on the next agenda. Since I think there's a few people in the audience that might...
You have item number, you have item two, Diamond Acres Vacation.
Now, we'll get to, that's right, public issues of city concern, not on the agenda, we'll get to that once we let everybody speak at that time. Item two, well, Mr. Hadley, is on our discussion items, is the Diamond Acres Vacation.
This will be quick, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just an opportunity, just so you're familiar, on the corner of Tenth Avenue East and 21st, that field area that then goes up and around the park that we have up there along residential area, that was all part of Diamond Acres development. And since the day I started here, I've been eyeballing that. Mr. Kubis and I have had many discussions about reconfiguring and redoing that particular development. In discussion with the applicant, the owner, and the engineer for the applicant, we've come to the conclusion they are working on some different plans for that. They're going to vacate pretty much all of that subdivision. They're going to leave some of the, a few lots here and there, and give them the opportunity to reconfigure and look at some different uses and configurations. There were some stormwater issues that I think engineering had with it previously, there was a number of issues. Obviously, we know that it's a plat that entitled development, and there's no streets, there's really no infrastructure, there's nothing there that anybody can really buy and develop, which kind of defeats the whole purpose of having a subdivision in town. So it's a win-win situation for not only them, but for us, because then we can also ensure that it progresses in an orderly fashion, maybe 10 lots at a time or something that's a little more doable down the road. So anyway, we're going to discuss that, and from now on, any vacations that come through the city will come to the Planning and Zoning Commission for your input, because you're the board that gave the recommendation initially, maybe not you individually on this, but this board did to the City Commission in previous years. So it'll be just a reverse process of, instead of creating it, we'll be getting rid of it, and then any direction or comments from this board would be then given to not only the applicant, the owner, and then also the City Commission. So that's all where, so that's all I had to really say, unless Mr. Kubis wants to add something to that.
Questions or comments, Mr. Hadley, on that item? If not, we'll move on to item six. Public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to... If there's anybody in the audience that would like to make some comments, this is the time. Please come forward, state your name, and we'll hear you out. Anyone in the public would like any comments at this meeting, please step forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close that item. Move on to item seven, motion to adjourn, unless there's any other things the Commissioners have to discuss.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. A motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.